I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of America, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to be a short invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing Hilton Head Council and Beaufort County Council together for probably one of the most important construction decisions in many, many years. Please keep us civil, please keep the crowd civil, and we'll do our best work. Amen. Okay, this meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act and was advertised in accordance with that. I'd like to entertain a motion from County Council for approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Tabernick.
Second that.
And a second by Ms. Brown. All right. Is this feedback too much for the crowd? Or is it? It is in the back? Okay. I, we'll see if there can be some adjustments made. All right, let's go ahead.
Need to take action.
By acceptance, but with no objection, the agenda is approved. Correct? Okay, let's go forward. We're going to do a review of the South Carolina DOT proposals received on January 30th, 2025. Mr. Fralix and Mr. Nguyen are going to come forward. I hope everyone had a chance to look at their packet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a wonderful sight to see both Town Council and County Council here together. And if you haven't noticed, we've got intermingling of council members on both sides. And this is the definition of local government, and this is to the crowd, of local government working and doing the work of its people. So just kudos to everybody here and appreciate the opportunity. So we had a County Council meeting where we shared input from a DOT meeting that the town and county staff and some council members were, went to Columbia and shared the comments and the options that they provided as far as cost and different opportunities for the project and layouts. And we had Craig Nguyen, who is the project manager for DOT, come and present those with Mr. John Boilston. And they obliged to come back. And I believe following our meeting Monday, a week ago, Town Council had a council meeting where Sean Cullen, the project manager for the town, covered those same options that were discussed at our meeting. And even though they've been discussed on both sides, we thought it was fitting for everybody here collectively as well as the public to hear those options again. We put this information out late Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning when the agenda was posted. And since then, DOT has provided an update, just mostly visually, but the same information. And so it will look a little bit different than what was shared in the agenda packet, but each of you council members have this hard copy in front of you. And then this, this more aesthetically pleasing version will be shown on the screens for you to follow, follow along. So with that, I will turn that over to Mr. Craig Nguyen. And then we can, after he's done, however, Madam Chair, if you want to have questions at that point, or we can proceed through the, the rest of the agenda and, and take questions later, at a later point, however you'd like to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared, and both councils. So again, we'll discuss the six options really. Yeah, there's four new options along with these, we're just replacing the eastbound Mackey Creek Bridge, which is where the project started at. So really, the first option is to replace both the eastbound Mackey Creek and eastbound Skull Creek Bridge. So it's, it is a, the first option is just bridge replacement with associated roadway work to tie those bridges in. And then the, either the eastbound or westbound Skull Creek Bridge would be repurposed as access to Pinkey Island. So there, those bridges would fly, the new eastbound bridge would fly over Pinkey Island like the original proposal did for the bridges. But the Skull Creek Bridges would be utilized to provide that access. Part of what led to that is those two bridges are tied together. So it makes demolition very difficult to remove one and keep the other one. So it was better to repurpose it than do a bunch of additional construction work in that area. It does include the Hog Island Connector to connect Mariners Cove and Hog Island back to Jenkins Island. So there is a separate bridge that crosses to connect those communities over to Jenkins Island, and then it would tie back into the signal at Windmill Harbor entrance there. It's still up in the air if the connection would make back to Jenkins Road or not. That's kind of further discussion at that time is whether that connection's made just to reduce the number of access points through Jenkins Island as well. The second option, so that one would be without the multi-use path. So the second option is to add a multi-use path, same type of project, just, it's just the bridge. I will go back and will say that those, those bridges are proposed as enough width for a future third lane with full shoulders that does help facilitate the replacement of the other bridges in the future when they need to be replaced 20, 30 years down the line, that we can put both eastbound and westbound traffic on the new bridge structure. Or it facilitates if there is a, you know, hurricane or an earthquake, that those bridges would still be standing so that there is a lifeline structure to Hilton Head unlike there is today. So the second option would add the multi-use path to that bridge. So that's, that's the only difference is it would add additional width for a multi-use path that it would not tie into the existing roadway or pathway system on Hilton Head or in Bluffton, but it would be built within the bridge for future county or town projects that would tie into it. The third option would be to same bridge as the first option without the multi-use path, but it would add a third lane. So we would go from Moss Creek to Spanish Walls Road with a third lane in the eastbound direction. Westbound would say two lanes off the island. So this would provide additional capacity getting on the island, but would not have, you know, additional capacity getting off the island. So it, it's kind of a half of the original project. It's, you know, if the funding's there for it, you know, it helps to leave some of the traffic congestion, but doesn't leave all of it. And then the fourth option would be to add the multi-use path to that. So that would add the multi-use path that would connect up to the Bluffton Parkway path and would tie into existing pathways on Hilton Head as well. So you would, you would add that pathway to the project throughout the project limits. The, the fifth option is the original proposed project of the 278 six-lane bridge structure. And then the last option is just replacing the eastbound Mackey Creek Bridge. On the, on your last page of the PDF, I'll, I'll slide to that to kind of run through what's showing up on what we're showing here for the different options. All right. So you can see for the, the lifeline bridge without the multi-use path, the total construction costs for, and all end costs, including right-of-way, environmental mitigation, utility relocations, and construction engineering inspection is roughly 258 million. Now, when we add the multi-use path to just the bridge structure, the price goes up to approximately 319 million. If we go back to just the lifeline bridge without the multi-use path and adding the roadway improvements for that eastbound direction, the cost is 273.7 million. Adding the full multi-use path in for that entire corridor, the project goes up to 340 million, 341 million. And then again, we're showing the total construction cost for the anticipated full project is 467 million. And then the, replacing only the eastbound Mackey Creek Bridge is approximately $89 million to replace that bridge. And that includes any associated roadway work with tying that bridge back in as well. The back, questions if you have.
All right, I'm going to open it up real briefly for any questions from any members of the Hilton Head Council or County Council. Any questions at this point?
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Couple of questions about Option One, which is one of those within the funds available. And, and you've mentioned that the width of that bridge, and has SC DOT looked at the possibility within that new bridge of having a pedestrian bicycle area that would be separated from the vehicular traffic? And if so, and if not, do you have an idea of additional cost if there is any to do that?
The additional cost would not be significant to do that, but you know, you would have to basically, in, in the future, if it needed to be widened to third lane, you could remove a barrier wall. So you'd, you'd have to build a barrier wall. There would be potentially additional width with, the bridge would have to be wider, so that would add some additional costs as well. Because you'd still want, you know, your pathway would be 14 foot plus the wall, and you have the 10-foot shoulder. So you would have some additional width in there as well.
But you haven't done a cost estimate on doing it that way?
We have not done that.
Okay, all right. But I believe when you appeared before the County Council a week or so ago, I think it was last week, time flies when you're having so much fun here. But I believe that there was a question about the possibility of a design build and including if you would in that design build, the solicitation for bids, an ad alternate to look at a bike ped facility within perhaps that new structure. Is that true? Could you do something like that?
Yeah, we could look at doing something like that. You'd have your, your base, and then we would look at like, this is the maximum available budget, and then have add-ons. Like, if you can do it under this, we want to add this, and et cetera. That, that can be done.
And then you're going to leave the, the portion of the eastbound that connects from Hog Island to Pinkey in place? That will be in place?
Correct, yes.
And, and have you thought about the possibility of, because it will be more of a local road, including a bike or pedestrian facility on that old portion of the eastbound bridge?
We have not gotten to that point yet to discuss it. Somewhat that'll be dependent on how we provide access to that bridge, whether it would be a viable option or not.
That might be an option, another ad alternate, if you will, in the bid documents?
Correct.
As possible, included there. Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions before we go on? Was that your last one?
Last question, the, the Jenkins Island or the Hog Island connection, that's included in the cost of the nearly 258 million for Option One. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, that is included in all the options.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, let's go to a review of the funding. Are there any other questions for Mr. Nguyen? Okay, let's go on to the review of funding available for the project.
Okay, so, and I think we're pulling it up on the screen. The best way to represent this is, in, in the agenda packet, is the joint resolution. And so in the beginning of the joint resolution, proposed joint resolution, is the second whereas clause. And we've talked about this before. And if you can scroll, if you can scroll up on the first page, right there, and zoom into that second whereas. Thank you. So overall, as this states, there is 298 million, eight, $850,000 dedicated to the project as it stands today. Of that, the 101 is from the county, so that's 80 from sales tax and 21 from impact fees. There's 3.35 million in right-of-way donations from the town of Hilton Head. So that is not cash, but that would be as a project cost we have to purchase right-of-way. So that would be a donated cost to the project from the town on town-owned property. Then DOT has 74.5 million dollars pledged to the project. And then the STIB, State Infrastructure Bank, has the 120. So when you add all those up together, that is the money that we have available to date for whatever project is defined and scoped, 298 million, 850,000. Secondly, if you scroll down to the second page of the same document under the funding source, if you zoom in there to the 298. So this is the information that Senator Davis referenced in his letter. And what he was trying to illustrate is exactly how much cash do we have, as well as considering what has been expended. So when you take out the 3.35 million dollars of right-of-way donations, again, that's not cash, that's cost donations, you're at the 295, 50 for cash. Then when we had that meeting in Columbia, on the, I forget the exact date, but about a week and a half ago, where we met, there was a commitment by Secretary Powell of 16.1 million dollars. So essentially, where that came from is if they had, the, the money that DOT has in the project is focused directly to replace the one span of Mackey Creek. The cost of that replacement by itself, just like the rest of the project, has increased over time. So initially, they started, I don't remember what their original was, much lower. It increased to 74.5, and the current estimate is 90 million dollars. So to get the difference from 90 to 74, that's essentially the 16 million dollars that Secretary Powell and DOT pledged to add to the project, whatever the project is. And then lastly, to date, the time spent since 2017 on the project in engineering design and community, uh, community meetings and the NEPA process, we spent a total of 13.07 million in engineering fees. So when you add all that and subtract the 13 million, the amount of cash available for the project today is the 298 million and 0.53 towards the project. So that's a summation of, of what we have, what we spent, and exactly cash on hand available.
I wanted to let everyone in the audience know that Senator Tom Davis is on by Zoom too. Senator Davis, did you want to make any comments at this time or questions for?
Just here in case there's any questions regarding DOT funding, SIB funding, conditions that need to be met within our governmental agreement. I'm here as a resource.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up for questions regarding the funding.
If I might.
Yes, sir.
You know, we've had some meetings with the DOT and, and y'all. And we're saying today that we have 298.5 million dollars, when we don't really know that we have 298.5 million dollars, depending on what the SIB may decide to do. And I think that needs to be a factor in our decision-making, because that puts us, if there is any reduction from the SIB, that puts us right back into where we were in June. if there is any reduction from the CIB, that puts us right back into where we were in June, trying to propose a project, approve a project without all the funding in place. So I just, I want to say that so that everybody is aware that the CIB may or may not, they have the right to pull funding. They did pull 400, 420 million dollars from Charleston in a, in a, in a one meeting. So the threat of that is real. And, and I'm just going to make this statement here now that, for me, Option One is the best option for us to go with. It puts us, it, it addresses the emergent need of what is, we're facing. It addresses the potential lack of funding and cost overruns that may be there. So I just wanted to be, you know, people to think about. As we're talking about this, what are we really talking about? We know two things. We know, well, okay, three things. One, we've got to, we've got to do something with the bridge. Two, there is a, a sum that is there that may be reduced. And then we know that there is funding currently from SEDOT and the county, so.
And Mayor, to add to that, that money is there today. And so our goal is to speak to a plan to keep that money there. And if, if CIB does pull, if they react to a plan that's proposed by town and county, and they do withdraw funds, then it would need to come back to town and county to react. Because if they pull any significant amount of funds, then all of the options, including Option One, are unfunded, except Option Six, which is the simple replacement through DOT. So that's the counteraction if that was to take place.
Before we talk about the resolution, let's talk about the timeline to get that resolution done. We're going to discuss the resolution, everyone has the, the draft of it. Mr. Moore?
Yes, Madam Chair, what we would suggest is, you know, this is an opportunity for council to, to look at this. Obviously, we cannot take a vote tonight. But we would take input, and then we would place this on the agenda for our next County Council meeting, for council to consider and, and take a vote on.
And will it need to go through committee?
Our thought is, if we discussed this at a workshop.
We can go straight?
I think we could go straight. We discussed this with Brian as well. And given that, it's really not an additional commitment to funding. It's, it's simply stating that this is how the County Council and the town would intend to use as funding.
And the town of Hilton Head's schedule for what voting on the resolution would be?
So I, my, my goal is that we will have enough conversation tonight to address those items within the resolution, that we would not need to come back and have a full workshop. We could bring it up to a next council meeting and have a, a vote on that. I do want to see this resolution move forward as quickly as possible, and correctly, because I don't want to wait until the 31st. I'd like to have it done really the first week in March.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I was just going to reiterate that deadline. We, we, in our discussions with DOT, we've been given a deadline, and the CIB, of the 31st of March, so. In our discussions with the Secretary of DOT stated a resolution from both the town and the county would be something we could take back to the, to the CIB as a negotiation.
Okay, thank you. You ready to talk about the resolution?
Jarrett, I have one question quick. What would be a reason for them to pull funding? Would it be a timeline thing or project itself?
Well, so we currently have a contractual agreement and a contract that says we're out of time and we're responsible for funding. So that alone is their reasoning. They don't need any more reasoning than that to pull funding. They could pull all or any based off of that. What they've been lenient so far is to allow us the time and opportunity to develop that plan. First, it was sales tax, and now it's without sales tax. And so it's their reaction to our proposed plan, whether they keep, retain the funding, or pull funding, some measure of funding, or pull all of the funding.
Any other questions before he goes into the resolution? Yes, ma'am?
So with regard to funding, on the revised project scope, under the elements, there is 3.5 million dollars for Stony Community Safety Project. And everything that's within these elements should be displayed on Exhibit A, but I'm missing a piece here somewhere.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Mr. Moore to come talk through the specifics of the, I'm going to talk about the funding, and he's going to talk about the joint resolution that's set forth, and then be better prepared to answer that question.
At that time, okay, thank you. Yes, or else?
Just one question as far as the funding is concerned. If I remember correctly, SEDOT has stated that they have contingency built into their projected costs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move forward with the discussion of the resolution, Mr. Moore? And if we could hold questions till he goes through it?
Absolutely.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, County Council, Town Council. It's great to be with you here tonight. We have worked as staff, based on our conversations with DOT and the discussions we've had, to essentially place all the information that's relevant into the resolution. Obviously, there can be modifications to this depending on where council members want to go. But essentially, this is stating Option One, not explicitly, but this is essentially Option One. So the resolution talks about the proposed project, the available funding, with a breakdown of where those funding sources are in the second line. And then we talk about that we've received from DOT an updated project cost, which increased the total project cost from 305 to 488. That was the project for both spans in the complete project. And then we looked at this, this was reflected on our quarterly report. Whereupon the CIB, at that time, proposed the cost sharing arrangement to cover the 190 million shortfall. This is going back previously last year in May. A follow-up letter, the county formally requested 90 million from the CIB to match the 90 million contribution from the county, contingent upon voter approval of a proposed transportation sales tax referendum in November. On November 5th, obviously, the voters spoke, and the transportation sales tax referendum was defeated by a 55% margin, rendering the county's match unavailable. In November, the CIB issued a letter to the county requesting a response within 15 days regarding the plant, the county's plan to address the 190 million dollar shortfall. At the November 12th County Council meeting, we discussed this, we discussed the letter. And at that time, council's vote was to not provide any additional funding to the project. And then we received a follow-up letter from DOT reiterating the deteriorating condition of the eastbound bridge, which had been rated a four out of 10, emphasizing decision on a viable project must be made by March 31st, 2025, proceed with the construction by 2027. So obviously, DOT is presenting to us the challenges that we will face with the bridge, should we not address the, the, the condition. November 20th, the CIB meeting extension was granted to the county until March 31st, 2025, for the county to provide a revised funding plan. And subsequent to that, Senator Davis, with support from the state delegation, presented a proposal to redefine the project to match the available funding. DOT has provided six project options along with cost estimates for each, including the proposal endorsed by Senator Davis. Two of the six options, excluding the standalone Mackey Creek Bridge replacement, fall within the available 298.85 million, with the standalone project being a, a simply a DOT project, where they would provide the funds with no match. So with that, those are the whereas, and then it's resolved that the County Council and the Town Council adopt revised scope for the project, known, as also known as the William Hilton Parkway Gateway Corridor Project, to align with available funds. It includes the following elements: replacement of the two eastbound sprint, two eastbound bridges over Mackey Creek and Skull Creek, while retaining the existing two, two-lane westbound bridges; construction of a three-lane eastbound lifeline bridge without a multi-use pathway; striping the new bridge for two lanes with only necessary road tie-ins included; designing the bridge width to accommodate temporary four-lane use in the future if the westbound bridge replacement is required. Think that's an important consideration. No access to Pinkey Island from the new bridge. The existing Skull Creek Bridge, either the eastbound or westbound lanes, would be repurposed for two-way access to Pinkey Island. Removal of the eastbound Mackey Creek Bridge, and construction of a Hog Island Connector Road, Bridge to provide access to Mariners Cove, Blue Heron Point, and Hog Island, linking back to US 278 at the Windmill Harbor intersection. And lastly, retention improvement of the Windmill Harbor traffic signal with mast arms. These are the project elements that highlights were laid out in the DOT Option One, so it reaffirms Option One as, as the DOT had presented. The funding outline, the funding elements are outlined as we discussed previously. And I think it's important to note on these numbers that the county, per the IG, is also responsible for any overages on this project. And that's the way the current agreement reads, so we have to consider that overages above and beyond this would, we need to have a funding source available for that. And that's part of the reason we looked at the, in the planned project costs, the reserve funds, to have some funds available in the event of overruns. These would recover the potential overruns, and if unspent, they would be then used for other road improvements along the corridor between Moss Creek Road and Spanish Wells Road. Project would fund the replacement of the 24-inch waterline up to limits defined in State Act 36. As we know, there's a utility relocation that's part of this project. We want to make sure that those costs are included in this, in this resolution. 6.5 million appropriation will assist with differences between the actual relocation costs and costs, costs covered by the project. Any relocation cost above this would, appropriation would be responsible of the Public Service District. And to address immediate safety concerns in the Stony community, 3.5 and, 3.5 million in local county funds would be allocated to a local road project with the town overseeing design and construction, and those funds would be made available to the town as, as part of this right up front. So that concludes my discussion, subject to you, you all's questions.
I'll open it up for questions. Okay, I'll start with Ms. Melinda.
First of all, I want to thank you for putting this meeting together. I think it's a great chance to do business.
Hit your button.
I did.
Hit it again. Oh, she's got a different one.
All right. So again, thank you for putting this all together and us working together as a team. I have four points that I wanted to make in regards to the, at the project cost. The first one has to do with the draft resolutions revised project scope. It doesn't align to the project costs. And Councilman Becker? Per fund narrative mentions unspent bridge monies to be used for local improvements from Moss Creek to Spanish Wells Road, and then the Stony Community Safety Project, however, the revised project scope does not include those areas. So I don't know if that'll be a concern. So it seems that we either have to change the revised scope or break it into two projects like Senator Davis suggested.
Does he have any comments in what level of specificity is needed for the potential unspent bridge monies in the Stony Community Safety Project? Right now, I see those as placeholders. And I would anticipate the need for more detail as we're making a business case for these funds. And if so, we need to lay out the steps to get this completed in time.
I also want to thank you for adding the funding to cover the gap in reimbursement for the PSD. We've been talking about that for, at the last couple of meetings. I think it is important to mention in the resolution that this funding is coming from local county funds, just as you stated for the Stony Safety Project. And my reasoning is that the DOT said that any gap would have to be funded from local funds or from the PSD. So I think we need to delineate that in the resolution. And the PSD is in the process of updating their estimate. Per Pete Nardi, they should have that completed by the 14th, so we get a better feel of more current information about how much that's going to cost. And as you talk about money potentially being pulled by the CIB, if there's any further reduction of, of the monies or the scope, there'll be a bigger gap between the cost and the reimbursement.
The resolution is written, it says it would be borne by the customers.
About that, in the resolution. And the last one has to do with the traffic, like it at Windmill Harbor. I know the M, the MOA town wanted to integrate that into our adaptive light system. I didn't know if that was included in this project scope, or if it should be included in this project scope. And if so, we should identify that and make sure there's money allocated to it. So those are my four comments.
Okay, do you want to address those?
The, I will say the Windmill Harbor is included.
Yeah, so thank you for those comments, and I was taking notes furiously as you were talking. So Windmill Harbor, it is included in the project cost, but we hope to be able to incorporate some of that even beforehand. We're working with town staff on being able to facilitate even that ahead of time. And then one note I did want to reach out on before the other points is, I forgot to share this earlier. So what was in the agenda packet and what you have on the screen and in front of you is a little bit different, and I'd like to explain the difference. So we got, like I said, it was out on Monday afternoon with all the information that we had. Since then, DOT reached out yesterday to let, make me aware that the project costs in all six options as described did not include the remaining engineering costs. So the engineering costs that we have a contract for is 28 million dollars for the project. We have expended, as you see in the, spent to date, 13 million dollars. So there's still 15 million dollars to be expended on engineering that's not reflected in the 257.7 number. So what we provided in the handout today and what's on the screen is basically distributed that 15 million dollars on a pro-rata basis on those three components, the reserve funds, the local PSD match, and the Stony Safety Project, basically had to, we had to draw from somewhere, and that's where that 15 million dollars was compensated from. So just wanted to make sure that was noted to all. And the PSD, so it, it does read as anything over that would be borne on the PSD, which in essence, yes, the customers. And so unless there's changes to this, unless other funds are found, whether that's grant funds, that would be the responsibility at this moment for PSD to identify that funding source.
That address all your questions?
I have a question for you that's, that's, that leads into what you just said.
Okay, let's finish up with, with her.
It just had to do with the specificity of some of these components. And, because I see them as placeholders for dollars, and I'm not sure that'll satisfy the people that are reviewing and determining what funding they give us to have a placeholder. So they may want more detail about what that three-and-a-half million dollar spend would be for Stony projects, and if there were any remaining dollars left, what those road improvements would look like.
Yeah, so I think the most challenging part is we have limited time to define all that. And I think this agreement, and, and though it's not granular to that detail, is the high-level information that I think the CIB would react to. And again, we're sending this as a proposal, and then if they have a response, we can most definitely address that, but understand the comment specific.
And question, Ms.?
Yeah, question on that. So if you choose to let the contract out as a design build, then all of the design engineering will be consumed inside the bid. So as we set right now, this is more of a bid project of outside engineering, not, correct?
Yes, so on the design build, and I can defer to DOT, but I'll try to answer it, and if I don't answer it, I'll ask them to step in. So right now, we're approximately 30% in the design. That's typically about where you are in the design build process, because you have to do some definition of the project before you put a package together. So there, if the route does go design build, then there would be a little bit of work, and then that cost, that 15 million, would get incorporated to the project cost. But yes, you're, you're.
But Craig, I mean, get me, get me wrong, but design build and the innovation involved in design build would most likely, if anything, instead of increase the price of this, it would decrease the price.
Potentially. I will say, some of that 15 million would get transferred to the design-build contract. The way this is set up is a bid-build cost estimate, kind of looking at it. The other thing is, under this option, there is going to be more engineering costs to get to a design-build procurement, because you still have to go back and redesign as a single bridge structure instead of a six-lane bridge structure, which is going to modify what the bridge potentially looks like. So there is rework necessary there. There's environmental work that has to be done to get to that point. So there is still some of that 15 to be spent, but some of it will go to the contractor.
But when you let a design-build, do you have it not to exceed?
Yes, depends. It tends, yeah.
I know you don't have to, but you can, correct?
Correct, yes.
So then we would know what's left over from the 298, so what Hilton Head would have in the corridor.
Correct.
So, just making that point.
Any other questions about the resolution?
I have one.
Yes, sir?
I don't think this will take a big drill down. It's item number five in the revised project scope, where it says that the existing Skull Creek Bridge, either the eastbound or westbound lanes, will be repurposed. So the eastbound bridge may stand up over Skull Creek, or we may use the existing westbound that will not be demolished. Could you expand a little bit on how that would work?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't mean to leave that out. So there was two things that DOT said, was the 15 million and the eastbound/westbound. So what that is, is originally in the agenda packet, it said eastbound. DOT wanted to reserve the flexibility on how best to make that access point. So once they get into engineering and redesigning the project to fit to what we're defining it as, it may make more sense for the westbound traffic off of the island to use the eastbound lanes, so that the driveway access to Pinkey Island uses the today's westbound lanes. It may make more sense, once they get into it, to do the opposite and retain the westbound in the westbound lanes and use the eastbound lane as the two-way driveway access. But until they put all that together and start geometry, they wanted to reserve the right to use that bridge. One side of the bridge is going to go westbound, the other side will be the direct access to Pinkey Island.
Make me feel like I want to ask the question again.
I know, I feel like I don't, I don't answer your questions all the time. I try to be clear, but sometimes I don't get it quite right. But ask again, and maybe we can get it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Follow-up?
Yes, my first question is for Sacramento Department of Transportation. Are you guys prepared to help step us through the process with renegotiating with the CIB? Okay, all right. I'm being deliberate in that question, because I understand that you guys have your contingency built into the project costs, and we also have, as this resolution is currently worded, an additional contingency in reserve funds. And for the group to consider, I am a little concerned about approaching the CIB and saying we've got stacked contingencies, and we don't want them to pull our funding. So as we talk about this project and the need for some additional safety improvements to happen on island, I'm simply suggesting one thing in the resolution, the way it's worded. As we get into the last page, and it speaks to the reserve funds, it says, "Reserve funds will cover potential project overruns. If unspent, they may be used for other local road improvements." I'm suggesting that we change that verbiage to "will be used." That gives us the opportunity to make the argument down the road for some specifics around what they look like and cost involved with them.
If I can help, I agree, that's a good comment, and I think I don't see a reason why we can't make that change. One thing I'd like to point out in the difference between Option 1 and 3. So Option 3 is the bridge and actually the road, the continuation of five lanes, and Option 1 is just the bridge. What we think is, there's an opportunity, if the bridge is completed, that we can still do the roadwork. But what Option 1 does is provide a risk, an assessment of risk for the county as the holder of the risk of the overruns. So it mitigates that risk, but then it also provides additional flexibility, really for the project, but more specifically for the town. Because the reasoning is, when this project gets redefined as just the bridge project, then only the bridge is federalized. So what we've been dealing with, with some of the impacts within Stony and some of the constraints of the project, has been that the entire project has been federalized. So by doing it in this method, then if there is funds left over after invoices have been paid, and there is funding, and we will instead of may work on the rest of the project, then there's more flexibility on what type of road improvements and constraints are not as rigorous as they are in a federal project. At that point, it's a local project that the county and town work together and submit an encroachment permit to DOT, and there are no federal funds in that component.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jared, should I clarify my answer to Mr. Prentice? So I just want to make sure that it's clear, that the contract is between county and the CIB. We will continue to be.
Right. And we also have an agreement with DOT for this project as well. So we'll obviously have to coordinate all those, both of those agreements. Right.
Okay, Mayor Perry?
Jared, for clarity, right, you just said it, it's a bridge project. The bridge is federal, lands on Jenkins Island. This has nothing, this joint resolution has nothing to do with anything regarding municipal consent, because it's not required. Correct?
Yeah, I was waiting for the question mark at the end. The short answer is yes. So this is a bridge project that crosses the intercoastal waterway, and so this essentially gives direction to that. And then, really, the municipal consent and the MOA are not required for this project to move forward. Now, whether we want to continue and develop a MOA beyond, again, DOT nor does CIB are involved in that, nor have any preference. But the short answer is yes.
And this really becomes almost a sales tool, showing the CIB that we're working together, trying to make the best decisions, and this is what we have agreed upon. Correct?
Yes, I would agree with that. And that was, in our discussions with the DOT secretary, he indicated the same, that it makes a strong statement when we go to the CIB.
That the town and the county are aligned.
Are aligned on the way ahead, yes.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I just have one more question. Option 1, at 257 million, goes to Jenkins Island Road, as I understand it. It's the bridge and the roadway to Jenkins Island. And then Option 3 will continue past Jenkins Island Road from Jenkins Island to Squire Pope, which is 8/10 of a mile, and then from Squire Pope to Spanish Wells, where we already have about seven lanes. But it appears there's a $16 million difference in that extension from Jenkins Island to Squire Pope, the 8/10 of a mile, and onward to Spanish Wells, where we have seven lanes. So you're talking here about a three-lane, 8/10 of a mile road, joining up with the seven lanes from Squire Pope to Spanish Wells. What is the $16 million being used for? Why is there such a big delta there?
So the $16 million is essentially, the big goal of this project is bridge work. $16 million takes the road work from the new bridge, the three-lane bridge, that is striped as two lanes, and then does a third lane of roadway from the bridge to where it matches up at Squire Pope, essentially.
So it's not three lanes in Option 1. It stays as two?
That's correct.
So that access lane at Windmill Harbor will stay the same, because that's really the third lane in that area down to Squire Pope.
Correct. So the intent with the bridge work is there will have to be some small amount of road work to get it back, because it's off alignment, to get it back to alignment. But that road work will only be two lanes back to Windmill Harbor, and it may go through Windmill Harbor just to tie it in. It just depends, we'll have to, that's the engineering component. But the road work itself would stop it at Windmill Harbor, and on the west side, on the mainland side, it would tie in most likely before you get to the Bluffton Parkway overpass.
And both of these projects, 1 and 3, have a parallel track that's being developed on the north side of 278 between Jenkins Island Road and one of those communities, Marins Cove, Lewheron, and Hogs Island.
Hog Island, that's correct, yes.
I'm going to ask Senator Davis if he has any questions or comments before we go into public comment and council comments.
I'll make a couple of comments in regard to CIB dynamics. I had a conversation with John White, the CIB chairman, today. And Mayor Perry is correct in that the CIB did take funding away from Charleston in the 526 project. But I would submit to you that what we're doing here is different in a few respects from Charleston's situation. You know, one, we're not, we would not be asking the CIB for additional funding. It, you know, we're working within the money we have. Charleston was requesting additional funds from the CIB at the hearing when they got their existing funding yanked. Second, we'd be going to the CIB with a good faith proposal on what to do with the money we have in hand. Charleston did not do that. Charleston didn't propose something that was scaled down. It didn't propose doing, you know, something on an incremental basis. It just simply said, "This is our project, and this is the money we need." So I want to make those two observations. I do think that our application or request of the CIB will be a higher, greatly higher likelihood of success than Charleston's. You know, in regard to the renegotiation of the intergovernmental agreement, you would have to do that, in addition to the timelines that Jared referenced that had been breached or not met. You'd also have to, the initial IGA was predicated upon the $120 million going toward an entire project, both eastbound and westbound spans being replaced. So, you know, the scope of work in that respect is materially changed. So that's, you know, but again, I think we can work around that. I think the CIB understands that we're dealing with cost overruns, we're making a good faith effort. I do, I do think that if we come back to them with this proposal that, you know, you've discussed here, and we're showing that the local match is being made. I mean, I assume, based on those numbers, based on what I'm seeing here, that the entirety of the local dollars are being expended. Is that correct, Jared? I think, so there's no question as to our local match not being fully expended. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're spending them, we would ask the CIB to spend them last, to make sure that we have enough funds to mitigate for any risk associated with overruns. But if there's funds remaining after the project, the bridge project's constructed, we would move those projects to road project funding in this corridor.
Good. That was my point, is that making sure that that local match money was fully expended into this corridor, if there was some left over. I will also say that any decision that the CIB makes in regard to the modification of the intergovernmental agreement, they are very closely aligned with and talking to the Joint Bond Review Committee, which is ultimately going to be the entity that approves or disapproves what the CIB does. So the CIB board is obviously very important, but the JBRC is also important. And I've had conversations in keeping members of the JBRC updated as to what we're doing, you know, talking about how we're behaving responsibly, we're working within the dollars we have, we're not requesting additional funds from the CIB, understanding that we don't have a local match to accompany that, the request for additional funds. I'm getting very positive indications from Secretary Powell, from Chairman White with the CIB, and also the members of the JBRC that I've been briefing on this. So, well, Mayor Perry is correct. This is, there's no guarantee as to what the CIB will do or JBRC will do. I feel very confident in our ability to make a strong case to keep the entire $120 million dedicated, even on this scaled-down approach.
Thank you, Senator Davis. At this time, we'll start with comments from each council member, if they care to make them. The ground rules are, we will have a timer for three minutes each, and we'll start over at this end with Councilman Glover. And you don't have to make comments, you can pass.
I'm fine, I'm fine. Thank you.
And it can be about the funding, it can be about anything you want that's been discussed tonight, of course.
I'm a politician, so if you say anything that's.
Well, what we're talking about tonight.
Let me go on record in endorsing a comment that the mayor made. I would concur with Option 1 as we move forward in this project. But I would make a comment about several areas, but the most important one for me right now would be what happens to improvement in the Stony community. And I think I want to really emphasize doing something to improve that area. Safety is one thing, and I think we need to make sure that we incorporate some safety precautions in the Stony community. But I want to go a little further and add infrastructure for the Stony community as well. And when I say infrastructure, I'm talking for economic gain. Roads destroy black communities. Here's an opportunity for us to take roads to improve a black community. And I think we can, at some point in time, this council and the town can commit funding to help improve infrastructure for economic gain in the Stony community. One of the things that I would share with you is that if you're traveling by automobile, going to Hilton Head, you've got to go through the Stony community. And the question becomes, how can that community attract people to stop by for economic opportunities? And I think we can really do something to design a system, an infrastructure, to improve the Stony community so that economic gains can happen in the Stony community, just like it did 50, 60, 70 years ago, when there was only one road coming through Stony community, and there was a lot of economic opportunities right in that community. How do we improve that for that community? Because the history has been, when you come through a black community, you really divide that community with roads, you improve that community with roads, but you leave that community with no gain at all, and you divide that community. How can we really work toward improving the Stony community? And when we finish with this project, the community can say, "This is something that is well worth doing." Thank you, madam.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ritz?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I like what my colleague York said, I like what my colleague, Mr. McCullen, said. Working together with the town at this point has produced a lot of very good things, and the senator. I think this could be a very good case study going forward, to get together a lot sooner than we did, to get things done. This bridge project's been going on for a lot of years, and here we are, being told by the SC DOT, "Here are the options." My understanding of the SC DOT is that they want to build roads no matter what we do. So, you know, I think we ought to take into our own hands, get this done before the SC DOT comes in next time, and take care of business. Everybody that I talked to also with this list says the Option 1 is the one to go with. And if this is truly a bridge project, and it's a county thing, resolution should be done pretty quickly. So my thing is, whatever we need to do, let's get it done. And the last thing I want to say is, the input from all of you people here and listening has helped us get to where we are, and taught us that we've got to do things a lot quicker and not wait till the 11th hour. So we appreciate it, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Tammy, councilman?
Thank you. And thank everyone tonight for your attention to this important project before us. It's been a long time. We've been talking about it a lot. I do have a couple of statements, and one, you've heard them all before from me, so just bear with me. I represent the residents of Hilton Head Island, specifically Ward 4, but all the residents of Hilton Head Island. And over the years, about 11,000-plus have put their name. And over the years, about 11,000-plus have put their name to a petition to ask that we take seriously the type of bridge that we're constructing, and that what it will mean towards our brand on Hilton Head Island in the future for future generations, that's critical to us. As important as all of our past history is, and it is, we don't want to ruin what comes next for those who bring their grandchildren and their great-grandchildren here on the island. And so with that, I know that, did Craig leave? Well, no, there he is. I know Craig has heard this over and over from me, and I'll say it again, and I'll say it with all importance to you, representing those 11,000-plus people, the width of the bridge is their concern, primary concern. And so with those two 10-foot breakdown lanes, it's a humble request to, every foot counts. If there's any opportunity whatsoever to make those less than 10 feet each, I think that would go an awful, awful long way to satisfying some of the concerns that you've heard over the last seven or so years. And so I want to make sure that I reiterate that, and hopefully you're putting a star by it as you're taking notes, it's that important. And then, just a couple of other questions with regard to the resolution. Number three on page three is to address the immediate safety concerns in the Stony community. 3.5 million in local county funds will be allocated to a local road project, with the town overseeing the design and construction. I still haven't seen, and I guess that's what my question was before, I'm not sure what those safety concerns are and what it is specifically that we're addressing. And I guess I'd like to see a little bit of some of that information so that we know that the thoughts are aligned with what the real concerns are there with regard to safety. And then just a, just a small point. In the notes from the meeting up in Columbia back on January 30th, I guessed under number nine, project timing, it's an estimate is plus or minus 32 months to get to construction and 24 to 36 months for construction. And I believe that within the resolution, this is what happens when I don't highlight things, there was some, there was language somewhere that spoke to 24 months. And is there, is there an issue with regard to timing from those two, those conflict points in the paperwork?
Okay. Is it Ms. Turner? Councilman Turner, thank you.
Given where we are today, I'm aligned to option one, and I've already given you my comments, so I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Passamit?
Yes, I'm in support of option one. Also heard that we should change on page three, item one, from the word "may" to "will", that this will be a design build and that we need to move expeditiously.
Thank you. Councilman Dabernick, Vice Chair.
Thanks. And I've stated it before, the residents spoke very clearly on November 5th, there is no extra funding, so to stay within our budget, which is what we've been directed to do, I'm for option one.
Councilman Alex.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. I too am in favor of option one. I appreciate us, I guess, option one B, because it has some additional language here around, you know, some of our concerns on, on island, okay, particularly when it comes to safety. I've got, I think about seven names on here, folks that have been killed in that area, okay? I'm not going to read them tonight, but I want to make sure that everybody understands that there are safety concerns in that area. So a commitment between the county and town to move forward to address those is ultimately important. So again, I'll yield the rest of my time to someone else with the slight change and the commitment, I am prepared to move forward.
Mayor Perry?
I've pretty much said everything that I needed to say, but I do appreciate the fact that we are all here together, working for a solution, and this is something that's not transpired in the past. And this is, you know, we've talked about it, about building better relationships, and I think this is one great step to doing that so we can continue to do great things.
Okay. Councilman McCullen?
Okay. Thank you, and I will not use my entire three minutes. I'm from New York, and I speak very quickly, so you all have to listen very quickly. I'm anxious to reach a collaborative agreement with consideration of all practical suggestions so we can begin the design, continue the design phase and begin construction. I support Alex Brown's proposal for an option one B, because I know with option one, the effort will end at Jenkins Island Road, and that leaves the Stony community without any real plan, so I think we need to have some consideration there for whatever funding is available to be included in option one B. I'm aware of the limitations of budget, and I think we can accomplish our goals with that budget after we reach a final agreement to proceed. This has been a long time coming, this conversation began in 2016. There are a great many people who wish to see the project take shape and begin. As I move around the island on a daily basis, I frequently hear a very simple phrase, "Just get started." And I think a lot of people actually believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pass.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, ma'am. So first of all, I support only working with the funds available for our current consideration. I support option one, provided that includes causeway improvements. There is at least one causeway there, I haven't heard that it does include those costs. Also would ask SC DOT to look at, in the project documents, looking at alternate bids on, if it's design build to adding some pedestrian bike facilities, including the portion of the remaining existing eastbound bridge to and from Pinney Island. I'm very concerned with another large shoe dropping tonight, another 15 million in engineering cost. To me, that's very alarming, and I would ask SC DOT to look at their funds available to make up that 15 million so we can go back to the 41 million we thought was available before tonight. I'm glad that there are improvements to access to Windmill Harbor, Blue Heron, and Mariner's Cove, the Hog Island connector, but that does include property on Jenkins Island. So the statements with regard to the question about, it's just a bridge project, it actually does include a land project. And it's my understanding that it would be land donated by the town of Hilton Head Island, which in 2019 was estimated to be valued at 3.35 million. I would dare say that's a greater cost now. So it does include land in addition to the bridge and, and access other than the bridge. I'm very concerned about the waterline cost, and I look forward to having more information about that. I'm glad that there are representatives here from Hilton Head Island, PSDSC, Mr. Nardi and Mr. Cutreir, and hopefully they'll have more information. But water is essential, we've got to have it and we've got to keep it flowing. I'm very disturbed that there's not any more money for a Stony improvement plan. There are safety issues there. In the letter that we received from, dated January 9, 2025, signed by Tom Davis and other representatives of our delegation, there's a really important paragraph in there. And that is in the last page, page three, when they're talking about working on a master plan for the land portion. In that next-to-last paragraph, the letter says, "In the development of an on-island master plan, we respectfully suggest that deference be provided to the town and residents of Hilton Head Island, and that they are the most directly impacted parties. There are several important island-specific quality-of-life issues to be sorted out in the master plan." Colon, "mitigating impacts on the Stony community, facilitating the free flow of traffic, reducing the number of accidents that occur at the signalized intersections, and providing for an aesthetically pleasing entrance to the island." This does not do that. I do want to work within the funds available, but I think that, I'm greatly dismayed by this reduction in 15 million. I do support the suggestion by Mr. Brown, also agreed to by Mr. Passamit, that that paragraph be changed so if unspent, they will be used for local road improvements along the corridor. In the 2018 referendum, the vote was for Moss Creek to Squire Pope, not just the bridge. The CIB agreement is for Moss Creek to Spanish Wells, not just the bridge. I would request that the right-of-way be reexamined, and also that there be a decrease in the speed to 40 miles per hour throughout this area, including the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Logan.
Thank you. First off, thank you for everyone coming out. I'm glad we could get together and get this on the road. One thing is I will say, a lot of people, you know, want to talk about areas that we represent, whether it's Hilton Head, Bluffton, Beaufort, but realistically, this is a county project. And I say that not just because the county is the one with the name on the piece of paper with the SC DOT, but everybody in the county goes to Hilton Head, whether it's for work or pleasure. It's not just families that live on the island that use that bridge, but the majority of our workers are coming from outside of Hilton Head to go to the island. So unfortunately, we are tasked with also meeting the needs of anybody outside of Hilton Head to get this project done, because those voices also have to be represented to make sure that they can continue for Hilton Head to thrive the way it has. With that said, I'm probably the biggest person on county council right now that wants to stop growth. I don't care how mad people get about it. So building a bigger, bigger bridge is just going to bring more growth to Hilton Head. Okay, I've driven that bridge for years, I grew up here, the time really has not changed as much as people think getting to that bridge, or getting to the island. I can still go from Buckwalter at nine o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, in 20 to 25 minutes. That's a shorter drive than Beaufort to Bluffton. So with that, option number one, I have, I really have no issue with. I wish we could have got this going down the road years ago when the project was a lot cheaper. When we talked about this years ago, it's been kicked down the can for Mr. McCullen Ted almost a decade now. So part of that does fall on former council members, some of us, myself included, not getting to the table sooner to get this bridge shoveled in the ground already like we originally discussed. I'll be honest, my biggest issue, like I said, is not giving the opportunity for more growth. I think it's our job to make sure that we can, yes, improve safety, continue to get our residents to and off the island, but as well as, let's be honest, this bridge that we currently have is not up to code. We need to get one up to code, so we need to make those improvements, and we've known this for years. Concern-wise for me, outside of the bridge itself, is access to Pinney Island. That is a major thing that's being lacked in this discussion. I understand the concerns for safety, which is we get over the bridge and Stony Creek, but Pinney Island is a big piece for the future of this county, whether it is for our residents that use it daily for boating, any future transportation to Defuski, which you guys all know is a big part of this community as well, and maybe one day even Savannah. So I want to make sure that whatever design we have, which is one of my questions earlier that I didn't get a chance to ask, but we have to have a plan for Pinney Island and what's going to happen on it. The federal government, including Nancy Mace, has already been on board for us doing plans on Pinney Island to improve that and to make sure it continues protected, but also it's used to fulfill its abilities. So I will say, I'll support option number one if that's what the will of the council is, as long as we stay inside our funding. Tired of the government living outside of its means, and we shouldn't be doing that here.
Thank you. Councilman Steve.
Yes, thank you. From a design point of view, what we've been given, option one, I think, is the best option. And you have to look at it from not just present, but we have to look into the future and what we're going to give the next council 20 years from now. So I couldn't imagine 20 years from now, getting ready to rebuild the west lane and having only two lanes coming in on the eastbound lane, because when it's that time, you're going to have one lane passing. I think it's, it's just a brilliant idea to be able to have four lanes when needed to build the westbound lane, and it's very critical should we have a problem. Should something come up on our westbound lane, without that bridge being that wide and being able to stripe the four lanes, it would be ultra-critical. It would be, it would be a real nightmare, and it would last for more than a year or two. So I'm, I'm really glad to see option one's there. And one other aspect about option one, is something that we can look at into the future with some data, is I agree with Ms. Bryson about this bike path and this travel lane for bikes. If we can somehow, some way, get this bridge striped to two lanes and then use part of it for a bike lane, we could start to gather data, because everyone's always saying, you know, do we really need a bike path to Bluffton? So we're going to get data, and we're going to get years of data if we can establish that. And that'll tell you what to do when the westbound lane comes. Do you hang, do you hang a bike path off a westbound lane, or do you say it was never really utilized properly, we don't need it anymore? So I think that's good data. And one other thing that I would really like for the SC DOT to look at as an alternate is, it's my true belief, and maybe only mine, I hope not, that we have to get rid of the lights to make this corridor work. And it's my intention to try as hard as I can to get rid of the lights in the corridor, be safe, take care of Stony, give Stony a true exit so that they can exit and have a Stony commercial development area and get back 50 years and 60 years ago, as was mentioned earlier. And I believe we can do that, but we have to start somewhere. And so we need to really look at getting rid of this Windmill Harbor light. And I would, I would really wish that you would take a look at, you've already designed into it a road going back to, from Hog Island. If we could use a frontage road going underneath the bridge that the road already exists, coming back across Hog Island and doing an acceleration lane to leave to go to Bluffton, that way we can eliminate that light. And so I'm for option one, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
I'll make it real simple. For option one is stay within our budget. I'll reiterate what our Vice Chair, Dabernick, said.
Councilman Steve? Second Steve.
I was one of those that liked the project that we approved at the town level last June. When the levy failed in November, we had to scale back, and the initial presentation is, well, let's cut out the westbound lane. I was one who at that point said, gee, it would be nice if we could do everything except that westbound lane. The figures we're looking at right now are not there. My particular interest in amenities that go with the bridges is a bike path. That has been very important in the things that I have pursued. It is extremely important in my community on the south end of Seapines. Polls there recently show that biking is more important than going to the beach. So there's a lot of people that do that, there will be a lot more, if there was, if there were such a path, from e-bikes, from people going to Jenkins Island, from people coming from this side over to go to the beaches, it would have a lot of use. So essentially, I'm just very disappointed about that, particularly because it's either now or never. If we don't do that bridge now, it's, it's not going to happen for decades and decades. I do realize the financial realities. It does seem that there is a significant reserve fund built into these figures, at the same time that my understanding is that DOT is saying, these figures are already well-reserved. So we may well likely have some extra money, probably won't be enough to do the bike pass, but I hope it will be used in Stony, as Councilman Brown has indicated. Thank you.
Councilman Larson?
Um, yes, I actually lived on...
You're last, but you're not least, so...
Lived on Hilton Head for six years, from 90 to 96, and moved to Bluffton, and so I have lots of friends that are on Hilton Head. And as a county councilman, I represent District Nine. However, I represent all of Beaufort County people as well. So again, looking at this, it's, you know, we've tried to push this forward as best we can, as quick as we can for a couple of years now. If the consensus is option one, I am, I am all for that, because again, I want us to move forward and get this moving before costs continue to go up. If I had a choice, I'd probably say, let's go with option three, because option three, even with the extra 14, 13 million dollars in engineering, still keeps us where we have money available, we have money to do it, it's right out our budget. And if we do not do those things now, they will cost more in the future. So I think that if, again, if I had my choice, I'd say, let's, let's go ahead and go with option three. But again, I am someone here that's willing to work with everyone else. For us to come to a consensus, we can put this to bed, we can take this, and then start looking for the next thing that needs to be done after this, which is going to take us years for the next option to come along, and start planning for the replacement of these other bridges now, instead of waiting until it's, it's too late.
Just like to make one comment. This is probably the most important thing these two councils will do in, in the near future, and it's the most important thing we're doing for Beaufort County and also for the state of South Carolina. I like option one, so we can get it done. Time has run out, and the buzzer, like we hear the buzzer in the basketball game next door, we got to, we got to go forward. So at this time, we'll take comments from the public. I'll start at the top of the list. David Kimball, and we'll start the clock with you for three minutes.
Last time you cut me off, so I'll try to speak more quickly this time. The League of American Bicycleists is a nonprofit that goes back to the 1800s, and they come out with a ranking every year of not only bicycle-friendly communities like Hilton Head is received a gold standard, and that's one of the highest ratings in the whole country, particularly east of the Mississippi. I think Hilton Head may be the only one. The LAB also offers state rankings, and South Carolina overall in their national rank ranks 47th out of 50 states. On safety, it ranks 48th. On funding, it ranks 48th. On infrastructure, it ranks 45th. So what is the message? I think the message is that we're a failed state in terms of building bicycle and pedestrian pathways. If we don't build a 10-foot protected pathway on the bridge, we fail all the local riders and walkers who will use the bridge for health, work, recreation, and connecting to the mainland. If we don't build a pathway, we're going to miss out on economic impact of bike tourists. We talk about Stony, Stony community. If you put a trailhead at the end of your community, a park, a trailhead park, a grocery store, a bike shop, a restaurant that serves beer, I can guarantee you, you're going to have some economic impact there. And those riders that come from in-state, out-of-state to ride the Spanish Moss Trail, over 100,000 of them last year, they spend two to three days, or they spend a day riding the trail, they may spend two to three days exploring Bluffton and Hilton Head by bicycle. And then those bicyclists riding from Maine to Key West on the East Coast Greenway. If you connect to the bridge, they'll have a connection to Hilton Head to explore that as well. So what is the solution? In my opinion, the state needs to do more to secure state funding, and that's what other states are doing. Minnesota, 40 million in annual funding. New Mexico, 4.3 million in the state budget. Hawaii, 10 million for the next two years for safe routes to school. Washington State, the legislature created a $7 million e-bike incentive program. And here's a great one. Florida, 200 million to connect bike trails to a statewide wildlife corridor. That's what you call creative thinking, I think. So what can we do? I think we have to ask our state legislators to make bicycle pet infrastructure funding a part of the annual state budget. They may do a little bit out of the gasoline tax, but it needs to be a lot more. And I think it's, I'm, no, am I good?
Few more seconds.
Have you run numbers on running a bike barge, a ferry service just for bicycles and pedestrians? If you ran those numbers, maybe that's the way to get around having to spend the money for a bike, a bike bridge.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Oh, one more. Okay.
All right. Next is Charles Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just for the record, the mayor and I, even though we share a last name, we're not related, as far as we know, anyway. My name is Charles Perry. I am the chairman of Traffic Committee at Windmill Harbor, and I'd like to, on behalf of the Traffic Committee and the whole of our community, thank Joint Council for coming together on this project. I think it's been a great thing. It's moved forward seemingly further tonight than it has in the last few years. I would, it's a very important project. There's Tim Kelly, who's president of our Property Owners Association, Mike Garrigan, who's on the Traffic Committee, and Joe Price is on the Traffic Committee, all here tonight. And so I would just like to express my and our appreciation, and also to voice support for option one and for adoption of the joint resolution with Councilman Brown's amendment. We think that's really the way to go, and we very much appreciate the councils coming together and doing that. I will have to take my hat off to the SC DOT or whoever named the Hog Island connector. There's a lot of creativity that went into that, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Kelly?
I'll withdraw my question.
Oh, okay. All right. Mike Garrig?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll be very brief. It is, it's happy hour, so I'll be very brief. I just want to make one quick comment on behalf of the residents at Windmill Harbor. I've been a resident there for 20 years. Before that, I was spent a number of years on DeFuski Island. So I've been around here a long time, part of and on the inside and outside of a lot of these discussions, and I appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into it. But keep in mind, you're talking about dollars, you're talking about time, you're talking about engineering studies, and I understand all that, but keep in mind that this project is going to come right in on top of Windmill Harbor. Whichever one you go with, it's going to come right in on top of Windmill Harbor, and it's going to impact Windmill Harbor. And we just hope that during the process of engineering studies, that some consideration would be given to us to have some thought process that would impact the final decisions. If you look at the, at the diagrams, it is like from me to you, from, from the road to Windmill Harbor. The other comment I would make with regard to the light at Windmill Harbor, keep in mind that that, since that light's been up there, it has drastically reduced accidents and saved probably a lot of injuries and a lot of lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Price?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you for this collaborative effort. I've been in Windmill Harbor since 2016, and I came from the DC area, so we know traffic. I have 40 years of experience in law enforcement, both at county and town levels. So I want to leave you with a couple of thoughts. Number one, it's my training and experience that tells me government's role in traffic is first, safety, and second, efficiency. Emphasize safety, then efficiency. What the Windmill Harbor Light does is provide for an orderly and safe movement of traffic for all involved, both in and out of our community, in and out onto the island. The additional thing it does, it provides an engineering tool to slow traffic, something that I know is critical to members of the town. So we applaud your work. We thank you for your support, and we wish you well.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Cliff. Or is that the right way to say his last name?
Cliff is his last name, yes. Christopher Cliff, for the record.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Chairman Howard, if I may. The option-one proposal is strikingly different to the proposal that went forward at the $488 million, which was presented on more than one occasion to the public. And this proposal is excluding access to Pinney Island, the ferry, and the boat landing for people traveling eastward. So my question, if I may, is there a proposal to present this new plan to the public?
During public comment, we don't answer questions, but you can direct that afterwards to the engineers, if you'd like to.
If you would, that'd be great, because I think for a lot of people, probably don't quite understand that the new eastbound spans are not going to allow any access to Pinney Island, nor to DeFuski, nor the boat landing. And of course, you're coming from DeFuski, you've got to come onto Windmill, onto the island to do a U-turn to go, go west. So I think it's probably quite important that people have a chance to consider that. Thank you.
At the end, we'll, we'll see if we have any last comments from the engineers.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Frank Babel?
I'm Chair. It's Babel, although others would have called me a babble. My name is-
Babel, Babel.
Well, I do babble. And first of all, thank you to all the county folks I've known for a long time, and to all the engineers and whatever have worked on this for many years, and to the people who are involved in this. I'd like to talk about two things. One is cost, and the other is investment. Cost is a road. An investment is the Stony area or bike path. There's a difference between them, and I'd like to explain why, and why I think you need to start thinking about that a little bit more. Communities that are big and small around the US are increasingly investing in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure to help reshape these communities and benefit people of all income brackets. Hilton Head Island is an example of that. Here are some other SC investments. The Spanish Moss Trail in Beaufort, 100,000 people. It's rated one of the top 10 urban walking communities. It is a source of urban pride. That's an investment. That's not a cost. The Swamp Rabbit Trail in Greenville. I remember that was a little small trail. Now there are 2 million people a year who walk on, walk on that trail. It has helped Greenville evolve into what it's become, which is a powerhouse. That is an investment. The Bike Pet Facility on the Ravenel Bridge. Can you imagine if they didn't do that bike pad and slow it down and put that in? Can you imagine what it would be like getting from Mount Pleasant? How many people would have to commute? Where would they park the cars? These are examples of successful community investments that have provided significant returns, and there are many other examples throughout the US. You recognize this, when you all approved the Beaufort County Connect's Bike Pet Master Plan several years ago, the US 278 Bridge Pathway was one of the key components of that plan. That plan was about our comprehensive plan. I have heard nothing from this side of the aisle about the comprehensive plan, nor this thing that we spent two years doing, 20 of us. It was the link providing Beaufort County with improved safety, connectivity, supporting growth, reducing traffic congestion, a viable transportation option, while also helping Hilton Head with its labor availability charges. We've done so much, we've come so far, as one of the top-rated bike-friendly destinations in the country. It would be disappointing not to continue moving forward. To walk away from this opportunity without a creative, cost-effective bike pet solution of some kind, with what we can come out of this thing with a protected lane or something, would be a shame.
Thank you.
That's an investment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Andy, I'm not sure how to say the last name. Andy? Is there someone here by the name of Andy? Am I reading that?
Or someone impersonating Andy?
Starts with an A.
Who wants to talk?
Paterno?
Patern?
Hi, Neil.
Okay, thank you. And we had one person, we have one more on the list, but we have another person that came in that I'd like to give that person an opportunity to speak to, but last on the list is Felice Lamarcas. And then where is the other person that came in? Come on up front, sir, and you'll be after her. Okay?
Felice Lamarcas, currently a resident in Seapines. I want to thank all of you for coming together. This is not easy. We citizens give you a hard job and give you a hard time sometimes. So thank you. I hope the county and the town, and I should say towns, will do more of this, so we citizens can see what you're doing, give you input. Thank you. And I especially want to thank Mr. Cunningham for stating the very difficult truth, which is, having moved from Atlanta, if you build it, they will come. So if you, and I did, I came, if you build a six-lane bridge, you're going to fill it up. Hilton Head is very special. I would like to keep it that way. We don't want to be like other places in the country. We attract people because of our uniqueness, because of passionate people like Mr. Babel. 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 So please, remember the uniqueness. Everyone talks about killing the golden goose. Well, pushing more people over the bridge and onto Hilton Head, in my opinion, as a professional working and selling on the island for 30 years, that would be killing the golden goose. So let's try to keep it special, do what we need to do for safety, communities, stop hurting the Stony community, and listen to what Mr. Glover and Mr. Brown have said, and let's take care of business. And I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the last public speaker. If you will state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Thomas Curtis Wannell III, and I would like to thank each and every one of you, and also Mr. Davis, for all that y'all have done. But I just want people to know, Stony was a living, breathing community, as has been said before. But can you imagine the quality of life of the people that live there? Can you imagine 27,000, 28,000 vehicles coming through your neighborhood in a 24-hour period? $3.5 million? It sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. Please let's not forget those folks that live in that community. That is my community. I live off Squire Pope Road. Squire Pope Road was mentioned here a couple of times this evening. I don't know if anybody's been on it lately, but if you know where the Rowing and Sailing Center is, people don't go on 278 anymore. They come down Gumtree Road, they come to Squire Pope Road, and they wait for the light to change so they can get off the island now. That's 25, 30 minutes right there by itself for people just to leave. The community has always been there. We have lost, like I said, several people in the community due to the road, and like I said, I appreciate all the hard work that has been done. But please let's not forget the Stony people. They're the ones that are bearing the brunt of all of this. I know you build it, and people will come, but we cannot leave them out. We've been left out all the time. Once this is done, it's done. If we don't do, as Mr. Brown said, let's go ahead and appropriate some money, so when it's over with, at least those of us in the community, we will be able to get some, something out of this, because we know once it's done, it's over. It's not going to be a do-over, and we can't come back and change it and do it again. But I appreciate all the hard work that everybody's done. But once again, please let's not forget the folks in Stony. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, one more. You need to sign in, too. Sir?
I'll try to be very brief. Oh, you need to sign in?
Yeah. We have for the record. Here. While we're waiting for him to sign in, I wanted to thank Beaufort County staff for setting this up. They did a tremendous job to make this location work, so that we could do this together with Hilton Head Council. It's a unique opportunity. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Diedrich Advogat. I live on Hilton Head, and I wanted to say that one of my favorite singers is Teddy Swims. Why Teddy Swims? Because he's got the tattoo on his forehead that says patience. And I think you all deserve a tattoo, because I think over the four or five years that we've been working on this, DOT, the town administration, county council, town council, it's been, it's quite a road that we have traveled, ups and downs. But I think that I would like to take a positive look at everything, and I think this project is an opportunity to be, to inspire others, to inspire the people in the town, the administration itself, and to really level up. And I, I think there are a number of things that are, that can be achieved. So for instance, the adaptive traffic system was installed. It's not fully adaptive, but it's semi-adaptive. That system also needs to run down the mainland, down to 95, and that's more of a county job. It is not a very costly thing to do. The EPA reimburses 80% of such a project, and once we get the traffic going, it will stop on the mainland because the lights are not in sync with the island lights. So I think that's, that's a county job, and I would very much appreciate it if the county could look into that. The other thing where we can level up is, with the adaptive traffic system, we collect a lot of data, big data. Big data can be used. You can identify critical parts of 278, where accidents happen more frequently. You can put emergency service into that whole scenery and reduce the number of accidents. There's also other ways to improve safety, which is by placing chavrons and doing other things that will, that will reduce the number of accidents. 80% of accidents happened because people drive too close to each other. 80% of accidents happened because people drive too close to each other. Then I think what we shouldn't lose sight of are the short-term solutions that we are faced with. One is the Windmill Harbor Light. Second is the merge from the Cross Island Parkway onto 278 westbound, where it originally was two lanes. You can continue that with two lanes. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like for staff to have any last words that they'd like to say from either the town or the county or from DOT.
I'll start. And I want to address, there's a lot of good comments, but one specifically regarding the public information. Mr. Cliff, always great comments. So there will be, as part of this project, it is a federalized project, we have to go through the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act process. And we've been going through that. This meeting is part of that process. As a result, if this project gets redefined and is scaled back, we will have to redo portions of that NEPA. We don't have to start over, but we'll have to work with Federal Highway. DOT will lead on that to, we will have to go through a process and have a public information meeting where we will share the revised or preferred alternative as directed. That process will take a little bit of time. We're envisioning that that process overall is probably about nine months. So we will work through that process. DOT will coordinate with Federal Highway. Once we get that, we will need the go-ahead from Federal Highway to continue on with the design and thus construction. But all in all, as referenced before, DOT's goal and intention is to have a project under construction in 2027 or out to bid by 2027. And even with that modification of the NEPA documents, they feel that we can still deliver on that date, probably in the latter part of 2027.
Okay, thank you. Craig Winn or Town of Hilton Head either?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'll just say thanks to all of you for sitting down together tonight and really talking through this issue and providing some clarity. I saw Sean over there and I, we've been taking some good notes. I do want to also say a special thank you to Mr. Moore for his leadership, not just you, but also Mr. Fralick. So thank you for really pushing and helping us keep all this together. I think Jared covered the logistics very well. There's nothing more I can add there. I'll work with the town council members, Mayor Perry, to schedule the agenda item and also with Mr. Moore to refine the resolution. I think there's going to be some edits on our end. I'll be so bold to say that I anticipate sending some edits to what I've seen tonight, really based upon Stony, but also based upon some other of the logistics. So stay tuned, and I'll work closely with Mr. Moore as we have been. So thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to say thanks to the town, Mark and your staff as well, and the collaborative effort. And I think, as you mentioned earlier, thanks to the staff who's put this together tonight to support this meeting, and thanks to the public and to both councils for all the discussion.
I'd like to thank South Carolina DOT again for being here to answer questions. We're glad you like coming to Beaufort County because we need you here. All right. If there's no-
I've got 30 seconds to say something that's been on my mind for three weeks. I went into the SC DOT meeting, and for the first time, I saw that design, option one. And I've tried, I mean, I appreciate everything that's happened, but I've tried so many times and every day, it gives me a heartburn thinking about not landing that bridge on the island for the boat ramp in Pinkey. I can't get that out of my mind because for the next 30 to 35 years, people are going to look back and ask, why did you not land that bridge? And why do you have three bridges going off the island for 35 years where we could have torn down that eastbound section? And I can't get it out of my mind. So, and I don't know if that bothers anyone else.
Okay, thank you for that last comment. No other business from our staff. We are adjourned, and thank you again for the public that showed up. It was a great turnout.